I'd like to call our Loudoun City Council meeting to order. This time, I'd like to recognize Reverend Jeff Scripture from New Life Worship Center. He's going to lead us into our invocation. And then, the pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Sergeant Mike Newman from the United States Army. You understand me?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence here tonight. I ask, Lord, that you would grant our council, our mayor, and all those involved in this meeting tonight, that you would grant them your wisdom. Father, it says in the Word of God that we should pray for all of our leaders, especially those that govern, that we would live peace and peaceably and quiet lives. We ask you, Lord, that you would just give them the wisdom, knowledge that they need. Lord, that this city, this community, we live together as one in peace and harmony. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Better than my thing?
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Pleased to have several visitors with us tonight, honored guests. We're going to recognize them first. We have a group of Loudoun High School students, I think, in the back of the room. Thank you all for coming. I think it's probably a class project or, okay, so they're doing homework tonight. Well, we're also honored to have Linnor City's government here with us, Mayor Akins, Vice Mayor Jennifer Wompler, council members James, Brandon, and Jim Shields. Glad to have you all tonight. Mayor Akins, I will recognize you. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try not to speak over thirty minutes or so.
That's fine.
And when Mayor Harris and I got together and came up with this idea, if you all hadn't heard, it was, we decided that we was going to try to energize the Linnor City folks and the Loudoun folks and the losing team, the mayor, would come down and recognize and the winning team to that respective city. And I know we have some students here with us. Unfortunately, that's one of our cities. We, that's what we're doing down here. But no, it's certainly an honor to be with you tonight. And I know, Mayor, you recognize the Vice Mayor, a couple of council people, and it is indeed an honor to be here and present you with a proclamation from the city and try to get people energized and to let people know that Linnor City and Loudoun governments, we get along with one another and it's all in good gesture. You know, it's not about who wins and who loses, but it's about being kind to one another and working with one another and making sure. And who does that benefit? It benefits the people that we all represent, the taxpayers. And that's what we should be doing. We should be sending that message that we all are working for the benefit of the taxpayers of Loudoun County, not just Loudoun City or Linnor City, but the whole county. And it's certainly, that's what we, that's what we want. And I know that's what you want, Mayor, and the city council. And I'm certainly blessed to have a city council that supports, that supports me and my office and has done so since being mayor. But if I could ask you to come up. So I have a little proclamation here. The agreement was that we were going to give the winning city a proclamation with a dollar bill. And so now, Tim Brewster told me that that would probably go in the closet. So I'm depending on the rest of the city council and the city manager to make sure it's displayed where everyone can see it. Because I think it's the first time that I can remember, and I've been involved in Linnor City politics for, since being the chief of police up there in the late eighties. So, but I hope you display it at a proper place. And I'm just guessing about what Brewster said.
Would the president say?
Let me read it to you, if I may. Whereas the governing body of the City of Linnor City has adopted a policy of honoring and recognizing absent individuals, establishments, and organizations within our community. And let me stop just a second now. City council will come up if they will with the thing. Should've asked you before, sorry. Whereas 2019 marks the beginning of an era where Linnor City Mayor Tommy Akins and Loudoun City Mayor Jeff Harris has came together and decided to challenge the losing team's mayor to be present, a proclamation to sign the dollar bill to the winning team's mayor and the city's council. And whereas each year, the Linnor City High School Panthers and Loudoun Redskins play football and battle for the breaking rights, and this is the second longest-running sports in competition in the state of Tennessee. And whereas one of the many traditions of the Battle of the Bridge includes a large banner with both teams' names and mascots for the winning team to keep the dirt filled until the next game, a special painted red and white football and orange and black that is carried across the bridge to home field, where it is handed off to the game referees and used for the first kickoff of each game, and a food drive for the Good Samaritan Center of Loudoun County. And I think Linnor City won that this year, didn't they, or did they? Okay, so, sorry, I tried. That raises thousands of dollars worth of canned food and monetary donations each year. And whereas on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Loudoun Redskins reclaimed breaking rights against the Linnor City Panthers with a score of twenty-eight to seven. Now for a bid proclaimed by Tommy Akins, Mayor of Linnor City, Tennessee, that Loudoun City Mayor Jeff Harris and the city council be honored for their two thousand nineteen victory against the Linnor City Panthers. Bid filed for claim that a copy of this part of motion, signed by the mayor and attached to it with the city recorder and burned to gray cells of the city, being presented to Loudoun City Mayor Jeff Harris and Loudoun City Council. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. We were glad to display, they did win the Chick-fil-A challenge, Linnor City did. So they did win that.
Mr. Mayor, can we get both councils together, all the representatives that we have, with both councils for a question?
Yeah, in front of them.
Yeah. I think that would be kind of fun.
Careful, you have Linnor City Council, Mayor, up here.
I wish we had football, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
How are you?
You get us all tied?
I'll take two, three.
One, two, three. Good deal.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. Appreciate you. Thank you.
I'll come back sometime.
As Mayor Akins said, I think the most important thing is community support, and him and I work closely together and continue to do that. And I think our council and Linnor City Council, we have Loudoun County in heart, and that's what we need to be focused on. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's welcome, and I'll just read this so you know what the format of the meeting is. Thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. To know my name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. On behalf of the council and the staff, I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennessean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how the government is doing business. We appreciate that each of you have taken time from your own personal schedules to be here tonight to see how our city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, you can pick one up at the table at the back of the room. That's your guide to how the meeting will flow tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. These rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, ensure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for some common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda that's entitled Citizens Input. This is for anyone who has signed in to speak to councils, encouraged to do so. We do, however, ask that you wait until you've been recognized by the mayor. After being recognized, please approach the podium to address the council. We ask that you observe three simple rules. Please state your name for the records. Please address all your questions to the mayor, and please avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once this portion of the meeting is over, the citizens input portion, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You're welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments may be limited. We ask that everyone remember that we're here doing the people's business tonight, and it's a very important responsibility for all of us. Please help us do this business by observing the rules we have established for our meetings. Again, I want to welcome you to our Loudoun City Council meeting. We're glad you're here. One person, one citizen signed in, and that was Wayne Arden. So Wayne, if you'll come and to the podium and address the council.
My name's Wayne Arden. Yep, I don't know, I may be out of turn, and I don't know, I've never, ever tried to do this before. But I'd just like to know what's going on down there in that subdivision, that farm or whatever going on. I've been down there since nineteen seventy, and they come in there, and I've heard now, like I say, I'm just going, what I've heard. I've heard that Jimbo King trailers should be in down there.
That's inaccurate, that's not, not true, no.
Okay, well, like I say, I've heard a bunch of tales, and I would just kind of want to know what's going on. But they even stopped that chow, I think was, was going to build, all that subdivision full of prefaced homes. My dad and Wayne Carter and Johnny Greer stopped that. And I just, I'd just like to know cops is out there all the time, and him setting fires out in his backyard, and odor going all over the subdivision. You smell it, I know you have. I'd just like to know what's going on down there.
I think our attorney.
I guess what I was going to say, I was going to recognize our city attorney.
They're, it's currently in an enforcement proceeding, and I'm communicating with Travis Gray, our code's enforcer, almost daily about it, and really can't say any more as it's going through the enforcement proceeding. But we've been taking the steps, all the steps that are required since this was brought to our attention, and we expect for the matter to be resolved very soon.
So it's going through judicial process and the proper procedures this time?
I don't think subdivision, it may be a barnyard. That's what they was trying to stop whenever they said it down there. And I just, I just want to get to lowdown on it.
Well, thanks for coming and voicing your concern. I certainly take that, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, that's the only one that signed in, so we'll move on with the other items on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the meetings. We have two. The regular meeting, September sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Those minutes are in your packet. Anyone have any questions about the minutes?
Are you private, if you're accurate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I review both the regular meeting and the special call meeting times.
Do we need to take those two separately?
Yes, we can.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
I make a motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Bevins to have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. All those, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Okay, motion carries. Now, the special call meeting, which is on September thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Brewster makes a motion to approve. Have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Councilman James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is fuel bids. Manager Ross?
Yeah, a low bid for the purchase of fuel on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, was received from Rogers Petroleum with a projected amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty cents. That places unleaded gasoline at a dollar eighty-three and diesel at a dollar ninety-six.
Thank you, see, bids that was prepared with Rogers Petroleum to low bidder. We have a motion to approve the fuel bid.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Bevins with a motion, and Councilmember Dixon, second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Have a couple of ordinance, someone's second reading. This first one, had a public hearing earlier. This is an ordinance to amend Title I, Chapter I, Section 1-101 of the City of Loudoun Municipal Code. This is the time and place of our regular meetings, which would move to, would be the second and, I guess, the second and the fourth, is it?
Yes, we did tweak some language to account for the last week of December, fourth week of December, which is the holiday season, and so we made that language change. We'll put this before you for your November meeting as well, and we'll adjust the meeting schedule for December and the holidays.
And remember, this would not take effect until January, because our meetings for this year's already been publicized. So this would, this has been proposed and will go into effect in January.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Brewster. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon, seconds. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the motion carries on second reading. Second item, we had a public hearing earlier to amend the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget. This would allow money from the drug fund to be used to purchase additional patrol cars. Any questions about that? Not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman James. We have a motion of second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Motion carries on second reading. Okay, first reading is amending the personnel rules and regulations of the City of Loudoun. This was discussed pretty thoroughly in our workshop. I think that Councilmember Dixon has brought this before, so, Councilmember Dixon, if you don't find others, you turn over to you.
This was where we had found, they had found back sometime in two thousand eighteen, I think, that where employees have been paid for extended time after they retired under vacation time, sick time, and so what this is, is to grandfather in the rest of our employees that was hired up until this point in time. If this is adopted, then our employees that will be hired further will not be granted this. So that's what this ordinance is about.
Remember that this, it's not what our policy states. We're following our policy to not let them continue to accrue. So, but past practice, as you said, has been different.
No.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion from the council. And we'll ask, I'll ask for a motion. This be presented.
I'll make a motion to agree to change our personnel rules.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any discussion before we ask for a vote? As I said, this was discussed pretty thoroughly at our workshop, and I know the committee board is before them as well.
Take two, take two readings.
Yes, it would take two readings, yes. So, make the point brought up in our workshop was, you know, we want to follow our policy that is in place or go with past practice. More discussion? Have a motion of second, so we're going to ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
No.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
No.
Thank you. Three, two.
Okay, so that passed on first reading, so that will be presented secondly. We have a public hearing, let's say, that's on the time, it's at six twenty-five, yeah.
On November eighteenth.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Go to the, next item, resolutions. First resolution is authorizing the convenience, the conveyance of the Williamson House.
Mr. Mayor, so at the last meeting, this body voted to accept the request for bid from Van Dusco to purchase the Williamson House for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in services and materials by Van Dusco and its related entities. I prepared a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Loudoun and Jeffrey Van Dus, Mr. Van Dus, and his title to all this company property in his individual name. And Mr. Van Dus has approved that contract and is ready to sign it. The agreement contemplates a, several contingencies that have to happen before closing, but we are ready to proceed with this council authorizing the mayor to sign the real estate purchase agreement and proceed to closing once those contingencies are satisfied. The only addition to the agreement for the one that's in your packet is that Van Dusco would have the option to take possession of the property to go ahead and start making some improvements at their own cost while we obtain those additional approvals.
Okay, and this is for any kind services?
Yes. It could be materials, it can be engineering services, it could be, basically, the Van Dusco-related companies offer a variety of products and services that could be beneficial to the city. Those will all still have to be put through our regular bidding procedures, so we would be satisfied with the price that we were getting credit for.
In other words, item price will be priced out.
Right, yeah. It's not, just because, you know, they, you know, make a bid does not, does not mean that we have to take it just because we have this agreement.
I know, Councilmember James, you had some concerns about it.
Yeah, yeah, to know what items you're paying for per quantity.
Does that help? Answer your question, okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about it? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve briefly.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dixon, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is authorizing the Loudoun Police Department Office Association fundraiser for Children's Christmas Fund. This is something that comes up every year, it's just more or less a, this allows discharge of firearms within the city limits. Any questions about? This was discussed in a workshop, and as I said, it's a housekeeping item, comes up every year.
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Brewster makes a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember James, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is authorizing the continued vehicle replacement program of city vehicles. You see, this is in your packet, this was, and on the screen, this for two eighteen Ford Transit Van, ready for replacement for the vehicle replacement program. And I think this is an even trade, and this Public Works, correct? Referee Harman?
Yes, sir.
Or, I mean, Parks and Rec?
That's correct. Even trade.
Okay, it's an even trade. Any discussion about that? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to continue.
So, have a motion of second for Councilmember Brewster. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is purchase of a snowplow. No, the authorized, the purchase of twenty nineteen Ford F-250 for the Public Works Department. The additional personnel, this is printed to purchase additional service truck, and this will also eligible for the replacement, if I'm right. Referee Ellis, okay?
Is this coming with a utility bid?
Yes, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilman Brewster. Councilman Dixon makes a second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Here, the motion carries. Now, next item is authorizing the purchase of a snowplow. This is an eight-foot snowplow installed on the twenty nineteen Ford F-250 that we purchased last year. This will give our department two reliable trucks. Hope you don't need them, but you'll have them for snow treatment during the winter.
I'll make a motion when you say the snowplow. I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dixon and James. Any questions about the purchase? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Motion carries. Now, since we're on the roll, we're going to stay with the Public Works. We're going to bring up the authorization, purchase of a mini excavator and trailer. The mini excavators are preference. We seen the different proposals at the workshop. The reason this machine is needed is going to expand the capability with sidewalk repair, stormwater improvements, and other tasks that we're trying to do now without the equipment. The Gatorade tilt trailer is a great option, and that's what's recommended.
Just local.
And it's purchased at the local vendor. That's good, too.
I'll make a motion to purchase it. Second.
Have a motion of second to purchase the mini excavator and trailer. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Motion carries. Now, the authorization, the purchase of a garbage truck and a hill front loader. This was also discussed, different options as far as commercial dumpster pickup. I think from the discussion, looked like council was leaning to buy the truck. So this truck is required to continue performing the commercial garbage pickup, and then we should replace on five-year cycle. This is year six, I think, had a lot of trouble with it. It's on the road now, it was, I passed it this morning, running, so they're using it now, but it's got significant issues that needs to be, if we're going to continue the service, this truck needs to be replaced.
I'll make a motion when you say this. Second motion.
Have a motion of second by Councilmember Dixon and James. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Okay, and along with that, is the next item is purchase of front load dumpsters. We don't have many square, or spare dumpsters, so I'd like to purchase some six-yard and some eight-yard. So you had some four yards in the workshop, but you took those?
Correct.
Okay.
We looked and we actually paid four yards out, we just go to six and eights.
Okay.
So that'd be our plan long-term.
Okay, so you see, there need here were seventy-five eight-yard dumpsters and thirty-five six-yard dumpsters listed on your packet. Motion.
That's what we, we currently have in service. I'm looking to purchase four six and a ten eights.
Oh, okay.
That's just what we have in service.
That's just what you had in service, all right. So it's four and six, or six and eight. Is that what it is?
Four six yards and ten eights.
Okay. Yeah, long and wide, all right. Any questions? Did we get a motion?
Not yet.
Oh, Councilmember Brewster made a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon, seconds. Any questions now that I messed all that up? Okay? I'll ask for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Item number nine, authorizing a nineteen ninety-three GMC bucket truck to be considered surplus, and this is one that was going to be sold on Benfield's.
Can we sell it to the utility?
We just got one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have a, do we have a motion to determine this to be surplus?
Make that motion.
Councilman Brewster, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman James. Any questions about putting this on gun deals? Say all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Thank you for that. We'll go to the next item, Department reports. Chief Webb, what's your opinion? You have anything to report?
No, sir, I'll have to report tonight, I think I've talked more than my lot of time in court, y'all.
Okay.
I give my time to Mark Harold now.
Chief Brewbaker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize and introduce our newest full-time employee, Scott Gatlin. Scott's been a valuable part-time employee for us for three years. He's a Loudoun, born and raised in Loudoun, now a graduate. He's a, he overcame a very extensive interview process, which included a practical examination, hands-on skills test, written exam in Oregon, if you would, Scott rose to the top, so Scott started full-time employment the first of October, so he's our newest full-time employee.
Welcome aboard, Scott. You think that's Chief Brewbaker?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mark Harold?
Well, I hadn't spent, I hadn't planned to speak, but I guess since Chief Webb, you don't have to.
Really?
You don't have to. Most realize that Dagman's Farm used to be in Lawrence City on the other end of, near Dixie Lee, between Lawrence City and Dixie Lee, they moved through Phil Dethrum, and they really wanted a Loudoun address, they're about fifty yards inside of the burn, or to be outside of the, so they have to fill that gap. They're good neighbors, they've been doing some good things for the community, and been working with them, got to know them pretty well, don't really understand their concept down there as much as I should, but they have contacted us about making a donation for the dog park. So Wednesday night, from six to nine, they'll have a light tunnel night, that's where you can walk through the venue, no one will scare you other than if you just look at the faces, and, you know, I'll be there, so they may scare you.
You might get scared.
But either way, it is all the money that they collect that night will go to Parks and Recreation toward the activities here for the dog park down here, so just ask to pass out along and help those major guys.
What fun is it with the lights on, you wonder?
It'll be a lot of fun for me.
Won't have nightmares.
For sure, probably scared the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And this Wednesday night?
That's correct, 23rd.
From six to nine, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Director Brown, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Director Scruggs?
I think I took care of you tonight. Just appreciate you guys supporting our department tonight.
Appreciate you identifying the needs, I know some of these things are long overdue, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Any other department head I missed? I know Nicole, she's, she's out of pocket today, so.
She did a training session in Franklin, Tennessee.
Okay, Councilmember reports, Councilmember Bibbins, we'll start with you.
Um, sanitation meeting will be getting next month, I think you should get an invite to that if you haven't already, to come to that, there's going to be some discussion as far as Hopper Springs landfill and the way that it's made up right now as far as who's in charge of the funds and how they're processed, and trying to clarify some of some of those issues. Other than that, I only have one thing. With the change of the personnel rules and regulations, one thing I ask is, did you guys consider the fact of how much of a hit this is going to take to our insurance fund in the future? That's something that I was very pummeling about to start with, that we need to try to save for that, and step back to that and try to save insurance that we got, because it's great policy, and we're just going to be quite a big get on that. Good thought.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Brewster?
I would like for Ellis to get with utilities for next year's paving schedule, getting the list of the streets that you got targeted, in case there's any utility upgrades. I don't want no more Highland Avenue. Give them a jump home that some major needs to be done on it before you get fixed for next year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
As far as the AMI projects on the utilities, moving great, just like everything's on schedule, and hopefully they may be all done by the end of the year, or before that. And then the Highland Avenue project, I talked to some of those employees there the other day, and they're supposed to be out there this week, just what they told me, so that should be done.
Looked like they were finishing up where the railroad, real close to that today.
Yeah.
I know I spoke to a business owner here about, about the AMI project, he was complimenting the water department, because they told him he had a leak, and they pinned it down to it was a toilet. He got that specific to where it was, it was a toilet in his, in his house, and that's, that they pinned it back to that, this was, so.
Yeah.
Kind of technology that provides, so he was very complimentary, very complimentary of the new technology. Councilmember James, you have anything?
I'm good.
You good? Attorney Friday?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Manager Ross?
No, sir, thank you, good meeting.
Okay, thank y'all for coming, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, by the way-